So the Zoom meeting invite is on the agenda. At the very, at the very bottom. Okay, bye. That was Michelle trying to get in.
Curious to see if Tony.
I told her to use the Zoom meeting.
I just turned it on, so she may not, it may not have been on when she tried to.
Huh. She's gonna try and log in now.
If we only have two people here, that means you have to ask somebody to authorize you to sign those. When we get to that, because I'd need three signatures to pay the bills.
Yeah, that should be here, that should be here, we should be good.
Oh.
She got in.
Hi.
That's Gina.
That's why I hear not muted.
No, we're not muted.
Just in case you wanna talk bad about me.
No, that would never happen, that's, that's why we're not worried about being muted.
Just kidding.
I can mute me, but why?
Yeah, that's fine. I just know that usually you start the meeting on mute, so I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll keep it simple since Kevin's not here. And you're not here, you're usually our backup.
Although I don't know that that's a reliable IT backup plan.
I would not even cast an aspersion by saying you're better than me.
We're just waiting for everybody else.
Yeah.
It's just you and I so far. Michelle's trying to call in, and Leanna said she's on her way, and I haven't heard from Beth, but I'm sure she'll come. Well.
Oh, you know what, I can't see, I can't see, oh yeah, it's up there. I can see the, uh, the chairs.
I can keep an, I can keep an eye on the chat also.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
There's Leah.
Why is there only?
Gina is online, Michelle's gonna be online, okay, and, um, waiting for, hi, how you doing? Okay.
Okay, I can see my water bottle, that means I can, the camera can see me. And, yeah, we're all set, yeah, the camera's good.
Hi.
We're, we're not unmuted because it's working and I don't wanna mess it up.
Totally.
Alive. Live all the way.
I'm gonna go, go, go spare the snowbank.
Yeah, okay, we're all set, Charles, thank you.
See you guys.
Thank you, Charles. Um, okay. Okay, so, you, per usual, I'd like to borrow this for a minute.
Of course, we do, every week it gets, uh, I, my array of writing implements grows because I know you need them.
I'm gonna text that.
So Madam Chair, do you want to move around, so?
No, please.
More on the camera?
I just saw the kids here, where were they, up to playing soccer? Looks like the soccer.
I'm hoping.
Me too, I was like, okay.
It's free. It's a free soccer program that they put on.
Oh, that's really neat. Through who? Through?
From Scott.
That's great.
He's in there.
I just, she just, I just saw Gina, I just saw her. So cute. I was like, oh yeah, I missed it, but I wasn't expecting that. Yeah, you and I, oh, it's like, oh, yeah.
Okay, Nancy Cagiano has joined us, Scott Bullock has joined us.
Hello, hello, just give us.
And Michelle's on.
Yay.
Hi, Michelle.
Hello.
Hello.
And we'll take care of that issue with your, um, J S, J E S account. I think it went to, uh, someone else's email, like maybe John's.
Oh, maybe Matt, because I think.
Yeah, Charles will take care of it tomorrow. I apologize, and today I double sent everything, so, no, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Please continue the double sendback, I have yet to set up first. I ha- I haven't done it, I'm sorry, I'm still busy.
Michelle, you, you are in the majority, don't worry about it.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll leave Charles a message to reset, redo everything, so you'll have.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's okay. I felt bad for Michelle, only to find out now that she's one of many.
Yeah.
Michelle, it looks like you don't feel well.
Yeah, I have a ter- I've, I've been battling a bad cold for like a week and a half, and it just seems to get bigger.
I'm sorry.
Michelle, when you, if you don't feel well, feel free to exit at any point.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I, I feel fine enough to come, I'm just don't feel, like, just have a lot of tissues.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Well, I haven't heard Beth, so we have enough to get started. Let us get, let's call the meeting order, there she is. I thought I was gonna be the last one. Where's everybody? Come on, come on in, wanna join me on this side? Sure. Hey, Michelle.
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi.
Is that talking? I'm not sure, maybe there's a lever?
I might just mute myself until we have to like do something so nobody has to listen to me.
Thank you.
Well.
I don't.
Oh, well.
Thanks, I'm telling you, it's a chair.
You and I are just slow riders, the elementary children here just see me.
That's fine.
So Madam Chair, we have, uh, Regina Lane and Michelle Damm at home, members of the, uh, committee. And we have Nancy Cagiano, Robin Howard, and Scott Bullock also on.
Hello, everybody, welcome, it's called this meeting in order at seven oh eight PM. Hey, has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from our last meeting dated January ninth? Yes, and any edits? None for me. Yes, there are none, I have a motion. Sure, I'd like to approve the minutes from our last meeting at School Committee one nine twenty-four. Do you have a second? Second. Wonderful, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And, I saw.
Hi.
I don't know why I can't see Gina.
I can see her, except Michelle's the main person. Yeah, I. Yep, Gina's right here.
There it is.
I said aye.
She's got an aye.
Okay, right now it's set up that if you speak, your picture comes on.
Yeah.
And I don't see the galley. Okay.
I, I can see, I can see everybody in the room, so I can monitor.
Okay.
Thank you.
That vote measure was five zero.
So moving on to correspondence and community, does anyone receiving? No. No.
I haven't.
Excellent. Would anyone like, from the community, like to speak?
There's still just those three.
Yeah, I'm gonna end this up.
Okay, so we can move on to the examination and authorization for payment of bills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The bill roll this evening is valued at fifty-three thousand forty, uh, seventy-four cents, so there's three zeros. And, um, very typical, paying back, uh, Mr. Andrews for some things he put on his own credit card, uh, the same with, uh, Ms. Delicio. There's a very typical, um, fees for our duplicator and for our stamp machine. Uh, Ms. Edmonds also is getting paid back. The one thing I do wanna bring to your attention, and I put all of the material in the backup, is the June bill for J R I, which is a special education, school, and if I could have the bill rolls, I'd like to show, make sure that, uh, the School Committee is very aware of this. Yeah, that's the one. Okay, so this is an eighteen thousand dollar, three, eighteen thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollar bill we got. And what you will see if you look at the backup is that I have asked the Finance Director how to pay that bill because we didn't get the bill until the twenty-sixth of September, which is in this fiscal year. So I have two options, one, uh, don't pay the bill, go to town meeting, have the, uh, a vote taken at town meeting to pay a two thousand, a fiscal year twenty-three bill with fiscal twenty-four funds.
Right.
Or, also in this packet, so that you can make sure I know what I'm talking about, is an email from our Finance Director saying that I can pay it through anything other than a general account. In other words, any of our revolving accounts. What I have done is I've chosen to pay for it through the donation account. Uh, number one, it's large, because I have not spending the donation account, with the exception of a little bit, uh, for the, last spring. And two, um, we're gonna run out of money in this special education out of district account anyway. And I'm gonna have to pull money from various places, so why go to town meeting and create all that confusion? When, in effect, all this is doing is paying this bill with a different fund stream than down the road in probably May, June, or maybe even as early as April, I'm gonna have to do that anyway because we're gonna out of, out of money. When I review the fiscal twenty-four current year financial statement, you're gonna see.
Yeah.
That we're in difficulty. So, uh, I did wanna explain that to you because it's unusual, and of course, I have all the paperwork here so that you know I'm just not acting on my own, uh, authority that the Finance Director has said yes.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question about, about that, just from my own understanding. Where we get, um, the circuit breaker funding back from, for special education, does that make a difference? That, you know, it's coming from a different account other than special education?
Yeah, uh, it makes a difference insofar as by Mass General Law and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Regulation, circuit breaker funds can be spent over a two-year period. It used to be a five-year period and they shrunk it down. So, if we get circuit breaker funds of, based on this year's expenditures in July, then we can spend it because that'll be in fiscal twenty-five. So then we could spend it in fiscal twenty-five or fiscal twenty-six. Now, this year, there's also a different account. When the, um, the state approved a fourteen percent increase in private out-of-district tuitions, the superintendents went basically insane. Uh, so the House and the Senate voted a seventy-five million dollar fund just for out-of-district increases. And that, that's called a reserve fund. So a reserve relief fund. That has to be spent in fiscal twenty-four.
Yeah, but my, my question was in related to reporting what our, what our expenditures were in terms of how much we get back. So, you know, if our special, special education expenses are going in different accounts, does that matter as long as we have collective amount that we spent altogether?
No, uh, that's a really, actually, now that I hear your question, it's a different question, and it's a really good question. The, the simple answer is no, because our invoice will justify the expense we put on our report, not the account that comes from. Schools, every May and June, paying district and special education costs from all kinds of places because we're typically over expended from unseen, um, expenditures that we didn't know when we built the budget, because the budget is built over a year ahead of time.
Right, okay.
Let me, let me also finish my, my, uh, my explanation about funding, even though that wasn't Michelle's question, I got into it, so let me finish it. There's a third pool of money this year, uh, that's typical, and it's called extraordinary relief. And that happens every year. And that money can be spent in this year or next year's, but they like you to spend it in the current year because that's why they're giving it to you. So, the short answer is we have filings that we're going to be doing from the middle of February through March, and then we're going to theoretically be getting money in three different pools. The reserve relief, that's the seventy-five million special. The extraordinary relief, which is an annual relief fund, which we will qualify because we're spending so much money and we spent last year. The, uh, the guidelines for extraordinary relief is a hundred twenty-five percent of last year. And then the circuit breaker, which we get every year, which will be higher because it's based on out-of-district costs in excess of approximately forty-seven thousand dollars. And the return is about seventy to seventy-five percent of the difference. So, we have a, a stream of money coming in, but of course you gotta pay the bills before you get the money. So you'll see that, you know, we're, we're pretty low on our out-of-district, uh, uh, line item. Okay? Uh, I, I did wanna explain that to you because it's, it's very different, that expenditure, and it is sizable, it's, you know, nineteen, uh, eighteen-three, so it, you know, it's not a little bit of money.
Any reason why they did so late?
Oh, I have, I talked to two people over there. I mean, I have a, a statement from Mary.
Wanted some of the wacky stuff, I've seen.
Yeah.
But it's a large bill to be paid, and they know that it's a different facility.
They sent us that bill after they sent us the July bill, and after they sent us the August bill.
Yeah.
So they were sending us current, this current year bills before they were sending us last year's bill. So my guess is it got lost.
The Congress, yep.
Congress, that's the only thing I can think of.
Yeah, they did.
And I talked to the gentleman, and I said, you know, we may have to go to the town meeting, that was before I, I talked to the Finance Director. And he said, yeah, we would understand why it would be delayed, but, I mean, there, there's no advantage for us to do that.
All right, great, you know. Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, so invoices for approval, um, dated one twenty-three, twenty-four, for a total of fifty-three thousand dollars and seventy-four cents. My second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
C and I.
Aye.
Okay, five zero, thank you, Madam Chair, because I apologize for the long, uh, explanation, but.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
So moving on to the superintendent's report, ready?
Well, I am doing every report on the agenda this evening.
Yes, you will, there's the.
So, uh, let me start with the safety and security report. Uh, good news, as you know, we've already done the parking lot fencing and the bollards, and we've, uh, also already done the transaction window. Uh, the, the security film will be installed according to the company on February twenty-first and February twenty-second. They are really backed up. Uh, we're working on the flip charts, uh, we have two, uh, two different printing companies have, um, our flip charts to give us a, an estimate. Uh, the video, uh, camera update is in process, actually, the individual for instant alarm, uh, was here today working on them. And I have no idea when they're gonna be done. The, uh, two automatic door closures are in, but the tumbler replacement is waiting for tumblers, I guess. That's waiting for, um, parts. And, uh, the, everything else has been done, including the magnetic door, uh, devices and the electric plug covers, so, uh, and we still have a little bit of money left in that, and we have already applied for the first payment. Uh, the, the state's doing this in a really interesting way. Uh, we pay the bill, then we send them an invoice as if we were the contractor, and then they pay us. That's the way they wanted to do it, and so that's obviously the way we're doing it. Thanks. Uh, the principals report. I feel younger already. Um, in your packet, you have the, um, the report. So under the category of students, families, and community, you, January twenty-sixth, we're having a movie night. And, uh, I would be disingenuous if I told you what the movie is, uh, because it just escaped me, a student asked me today, and I didn't know. Uh, I'm sure someone here knows.
It was a vote, right?
Yeah, there was a vote, and I didn't participate in. Uh, the Johnson School Summer Enrichment that we prepared, uh, uh, the, the large presentation for you last time uh, is moving forward, uh, registration's already open, and we already have eighteen-year-olds, so doing it early pays off. Um, the, uh, the CPA grant has paid for the Boulder scramble and signage in the Forest Playground. And we got a Massachusetts Cultural Council grant, and that was in the Lynn item, which, uh, there's a picture of it in your packet. Uh, and that's for eleven hundred dollars for organic, mat, marine animals. Uh, technology, Mr. Andrews has contacted, uh, I think it's Ms. Bell, the President of N E F, and they are discussing the technology support, uh, this year from N E F. On a curriculum matter, uh, the Massachusetts Partnerships for Youth poster contest is drawing to a close. The concept or the title of the posters this year is "Respect, Give It, Get It." And, uh, our art teacher is working feverishly to get them in because they're due by three PM on Friday. That's all done electronically now. The kids do the posters, we take pictures, and then we upload them. Uh, there's gonna be an art show at the Nahat Public Library on March seventh at five thirty, which will, um, show off our student art, and it says press release attached, but I don't see it. Um, I'll get that to you. And, uh, the Instruction Assessment and Professional Development, uh, Ms. Andrews intended to talk to you during the, um, quarterly report, which of course I will do.
Um, Mr. Peretanzi, the movie that won the role.
I just looked at it.
Ice Day. Oh, good.
That's funny, now you know.
Very, very apropos if it was last Friday.
Yes.
Although we are getting a little snow tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We are?
Yeah.
We are.
Yeah, not, not much, just, just enough to annoy me. Okay, Madam Chair, I'll go right to six C with your permission, the facility is in great shape. Uh, just so you know, I always have a custodian check the building on weekends when the weather is as cold as it is. Um, uh, three years ago, that, we caught a leak early rather than late by doing that. So it certainly is worth the investment of, of a couple hours of, of overtime. And the building was functioning really well. Unfortunately, when we came in on Monday, the heater in the cafeteria had clicked off. And that's, of course, brand new, we just put that in last year. So, uh, we'll, Benny's on vacation, so when he gets back, uh, I will have him check that with the company. Somebody did come and check it out, uh, just to make sure it was running, uh, but it wasn't the installer, so we'll have somebody check that out. So please stop me anytime. Um, item six D, the water fountain update, I believe I've already informed you, well, let's get it on the official record. Uh, on Friday, I got a call from a newspaper reporter who wanted to know why, uh, Johnson Elementary School was on the, uh, Mass Clean Water website as getting a grant. And I didn't know anything about it. Uh, but, the Friday before was the deadline for applying for the Clean Water Grant, which, and I had hoped I got my paperwork in on time, which evidently I did because, uh, we got the three thousand dollars.
Oh, wow.
Oh, nice work.
Yeah. Um, at least it's on their website, they haven't sent me any notice yet.
That's funny.
But, uh.
That was great.
Yeah, well, they met, the, uh, board met Thursday of last week, and then it was evidently posted immediately. Uh, but I didn't get any official notice, but, um, we have two plumbing companies who are, uh, go, are out to bid to, uh, competitively to see. And what we're gonna do, um, is we are gonna get a new water fountain and water bottle filler like we have outside the nurse's office, and we have at, in the cafeteria. We're gonna have a new one downstairs. Also, downstairs, one downstairs and one upstairs, is we have the two thousand seven additions of hallway water bubblers, and they're the ones that have the high and the low with the stainless, with the stainless steel covers. So what, uh, we're gonna do, because they're already electrified and they're already refrigerated. So there's absolutely no reason to rip those out. So there's absolutely no reason to rip those out and put a three thousand dollar machine in. So, uh, as part of the reno, um, I've asked for a bid to just put an inline filter, which would go inside the wall, you wouldn't even see it. So they're gonna look exactly the same, except all the water coming out of those water fountains will be filtered. Um, so all of the hallway water fountains then will have water, uh, filtered water. Uh, so any, uh, lead or copper or any impurities will be filtered out, and then we'll just have to change, I mean, the, the, um, water filler slash water bottle, the water bottle filler slash bubbler have filters behind the scene anyway. So it'll just be a different type of filter. Okay?
Excellent.
And my guess is it'll run a couple of thousand more than the three thousand. Uh, that's typically what's been happening. Okay?
Thanks, Ray.
Uh, quarterly report. Let's start with academics, in your packet, you have two pages. This is an assessment update using IREDA results. And the first one is reading, the first page is reading, and the second page is mathematics. And as you will see, um, the results of this testing come back simplified into three tiers, which match the D E S E tiers of student support. So the way it goes is tier one is no support. The student is at or above grade level. Tier two is minimal support, and that would mean a teacher helping a student understand certain things. Um, uh, not tutoring, but tutoring within class or during the, uh, one day a week after school.
Yep.
Tier three would be special education or English language learning, or an IEP, or working with our special education teacher. Interestingly, our results are such that it shows that students are getting special education help who aren't tier three. And that's okay.
Yep.
Because some of the tiers two students may just be in tier two and of, you know, and with one or two fewer answers could be in tier three. So it's okay. But what this is showing us is in, uh, reading, fifty-two percent of our students need no support at all, forty-one minimal support, and seven percent are special education or need significant report, uh, support. Uh, in reading, in mathematics, which is interesting because we did, uh, you know, we're focused on math and that's okay. Only thirty-four percent were at tier one, but a whopping sixty percent were at tier two, and only five percent are at risk in tier three. So in a nutshell, I think these results, which, uh, are repeated testing, these aren't done, you know, once a year like MCAS. Our, our staff keeps up with this. Um, and then, of course, both the English, uh, excuse me, the reading, uh, and the, um, mathematics are divided into the domains of the subject, and we're pretty consistently doing well. You know, I don't really see any glaring, um, worries. Could've put it that way. Um, I mean, there are, I mean, in the reading, I mean, we have almost nobody who is in the risk category for, for phonological awareness or high-frequency words. I mean, I mean, that's, my guess is that's one student. Maybe two. If you see, um, and obviously, um, we're dominating in tier one and two, just like the overall results. So I want to thank, uh, number one, I think, I want to thank the staff for all their phenomenal work with the, the students. Uh, and I want to thank Mr. Andrews for putting this together for us, because it does give us a lot of information.
It's a great piece, um, I was wondering if you wanted to say, if you could say a little more about how you work with the, this, that, um, the students are needing some extra, soft extra support, you know, not heavy, which is great, but like soft extra support and whether that, how do you, do you think about that as a indicator of like strengthening that sort of teaching muscle? Is it that kids are coming in a little bit lower, you know, maybe when they're younger? Just wonder like how you read that?
That's a great question, um. The intricacies of the data are better known by the teaching staff and Mr. Andrews.
Yep.
Than show up here.
Yep.
So in each of these domains, there's multiple things that our staff are focused on to improve the performance of students in, for example, the domain of phonics.
Yep.
It's not just one thing, it's a whole array of skill sets. So what they do is they look at the results of their particular class multiple times. They get the data we're getting, and then they get, uh, an item analysis too.
That's great.
So they can address the more specific things. So for example, they'll find out what are the high-frequency words that our students are not doing well, is it multiples, um, meaning words? Is it, uh, multiple syllable words, is it four syllable or high, you know, all kinds of little details. And then they dive into it, and they, they adjust and ind- and, uh, target their instruction, and they're testing.
Yep. Okay.
Okay? And, uh, I can have Mr. Andrews address this again next meeting if you feel that you would like him to specifically address it.
Yes, I think that would be good.
I think what would be interesting for, um, it'd be interesting to hear him answer that question, and maybe to your point, he could, um, if there's a natural place for him to ask teachers and get feedback from teachers on how they view the data, then, um, it'd be interesting to hear there would be that. The two things that jumped up were just this, this, you know, swath of soft health, right? And then I think, I think about, I'm gonna, oh, as a parent, when I look at the fact that kids have better, a better sense of phonological awareness over vocabulary. And I know that I am not doing all of the reading out loud and with my kids that I need to do, that I think is right for, um, for them, right? So like, uh, I worry that while I, I was sitting down to do homework and sound out words with them here, vocabulary usually is from doing a lot of reading, right? Well, parents reading and students reading, you know, and practicing. So I look at that on my phone or my own kids, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if they were down here because I don't feel like I'm doing enough reading aloud with them. And so I wonder, I don't know, so I wondered about, um, what, whether, I wonder, do the teachers think that kids are doing enough reading aloud, right, um, at home? And reading at home, and are there other places where, um, we could help build vocabulary?
Yeah, I think one of, I mean.
And it's not, I'm not concerned, these are close enough, I'm just noticing the difference, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And that difference is a snapshot, number one.
Exactly.
It could change totally the next time.
Right.
And number two, with our number of students, it could be, you know, kids didn't, you know, if five kids didn't feel well, you know, it would show up.
Exactly. Right.
You know, it's not like we have a thousand kids.
Of course.
So elaborating on the concept, one of the most important things parents can do with kids for vocabulary development is to constantly ask questions about whether students understand the language that they're using. They being the parents, not the children.
Yeah.
So, and the, and the more hammered your life becomes, my guess is the fewer times you. So, um, you know, studies over and over, over again, show that, um, the vocabulary used and the education of the individual in the home that's home with the kids the most is a key factor.
Yeah.
Um, math is a little different. Uh, a lot of math depends on, uh, the way your brain works.
Yeah.
And, you know, if your, if your, if your parents are both CPAs, you tend to have a, you know, uh, have, you haven't inherited a a skill set or a scientist or, uh, that is different that, than, you know, if both of your parents tend to be, um, either art, more artsy or, um, writers, for example. You know, and obviously, if your, both of your parents are writers, your vocabulary is probably a little bit, you know? So it, it does really matter. And, uh, but our job, because that's what I can call uncontrollable. Our job is to take the children when we have them and, and maximize their potential. That's what we can control. And that's really where our efforts are really focused.
I also really love the push from the teachers, which is pretty consistent across teachers here, to remind and push parents around reading at home to kids.
Yeah.
That's a consistent message from the Johnson that I really appreciate. Um, and it works for, actually, the reading out loud, provided you can read, um, works for every Strata kid, so I appreciate that part.
Yeah, and the other thing, um, we have software packages, the kids use them here with math focus.
Yep.
Yeah. The, the ready math, the kids can go home, and that's all individualized. So if a child is, uh, in needing, uh, certain things, the software package actually figures out what the, the, the child isn't strong at and keeps giving them questions about.
Mm-hmm.
It's fascinating, so, but they have to sit and do it. Okay?
Thank you.
But, but really good, you know, very pleasing results. Uh, of course, we're not satisfied, it's, it's continuous improvement, but, uh, very happy with those results. Professional development, uh, we had, uh, Mr. Andrews, I'm gonna ask him to do that. Like, he had a whole thing ready for you to give you the, um, feedback on every one of the activities. Uh, this activity was on a Friday, so my feedback would be minimal and hearsay because
Yep.
I wasn't even in the building. So, with your permission, uh, I'll pass on that one. But we did have, uh, I have heard positive feedback about January twelve. And Mr. Andrews is really interfacing, uh, based on the survey that was done last year, he is really interfacing with the PD Committee. He's asking teachers a lot of, for a lot of input. And, uh, they are involved in making decisions about what happens. Uh, personnel report is in your packet, um, interestingly enough, we updated this yesterday. Uh, Mr. Paul Weber joined us, and we did have a resignation a couple weeks ago. And that's all up to date as of yesterday. And now for the big one, the current year's finances. So this looks very much like the budget that we are building with a little bit of difference. Uh, what I did is I'm gonna start at the back, like I always do, give you the, the basic news. And then we're gonna go back up front and repeat it. Um, we have, at this point in the school year, forty-two point three percent of our budget left. However, that doesn't really tell you the, um, the story. Because what I do to figure it out is I take the four big items out of the, um, equation. Because, for example, we just spent a half a million dollars last meeting on our Swanscott. If we had done, if we had done this snatch, snapshot the week before that, it would look totally different.
Exactly.
So what I do is I take the transportation, the out of district, Essex, and the, uh, Swanscott out. So, uh, that leaves us with a, an expenditure, believe it or not, of about one point nine million dollars, one point nine eight annually on everything else. And we have spent one, about one point one million, and we have about eight hundred thousand left, which is not bad. It's probably where we should be. Uh, it would be, in a typical year, we'd have a little bit more because our, uh, as you know, are out of, um, and it doesn't take into consideration that our out of district expenses are going to be over budget because I took them out. Right? Okay? So, let's go back to the first page. I put an asterisk next to everything that we really love, so you see everything that's at sixty percent or fifty percent, I, I'm not worried about. So the first one is our legal, we had a couple of legal issues and we're gonna overexpend our legal budget this year. Um, Mary Altsford has been working with me, and actually, I communicated with her today. So, uh, that's why there's an asterisk there. We are going to expend a little bit more of our superintendent's office salaries because you were generous.
Right.
Right?
Nice.
And I, I couldn't budget your generosity because I didn't know about it when I got you.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, next one is our principal's office personnel services. Um, that looks worse than it is, because what I'm going to be able to do is I, I pay the, uh, principal salary at a cou- a couple of different pools, and I haven't transferred that yet. So, for example, he's the curriculum director, so I use somebody there. He also runs the after-school program and the, uh, before-school program, um, and the summer program, so I take funds out of that.
Yeah.
So that will, uh, come, because this represents the expenditure in a gross way, not the net.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, the next item is to concern ourselves is the substitutes. We have had a brutal year with substitute. I mean, today, there were six people out.
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's true everywhere, it's everywhere.
So.
But, for Mr. Andrews said that we had good ability to get substitute coverage, right?
Yeah, but then we.
That's great.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Like today, I came in early because I knew Mr. Andrews was out, I knew, um, Ms. April was out, I knew Vinnie was out, and I knew we had two teachers who were out.
Yeah.
So I came in, but I, I have to say, Mr. Andrews did a marvelous job. I mean, I, I was running around and saying to people, now, during your prep period, I may need you to do this, or I may need you to cover a lunch, but we were covered.
Yeah. That's what I said.
So I was high. So, uh, we're gonna need money in that account. Um, the general supplies and materials, I'm not worried about, but I thought I should tell you that we're over expended by almost forty percent already. But, uh, we have other accounts to get that from, and I didn't want you to, you know, have to look at me and say, come on, Tommy, why come, why did you bring that to our attention? That was in the hole. So, uh, but we, we will replenish that. On page three, there's only one that I'm worried about, and that's the school custodial department, um. We have had, uh, a couple of different issues. Obviously, snow is one, um, uh, there was, as I said, I always have a custodian come in uh, during the, um, during the really frigid weather. And, um, that account will be a little higher because we really don't get a substitute custodian. But the sub-account will benefit from this account absorbing. You know, I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. You know, I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. I mean, if I had to pay for a substitute, Vinnie's been out since last week, you know, come back tomorrow. Charles has been putting some time in and we all pitched together. And so uh, and we didn't, we haven't had a, a, a full-time daily custodian here during the day. But we have found that a custodian who doesn't know anything about the building or any of the kids or any of the staff, really isn't a good expenditure of money. Okay? The next page is the big one. Uh, our tuition to private schools budgeted at four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. We've already expended three nineteen and we only have thirty-two, basically thirty-three percent left with um, about sixty percent of the bills still out. But those other three places that um, I was talking about earlier in the meeting, hopefully we can get money from them. I know we can get money from them and hopefully it will balance out in the end. Um. But right now, that number should read uh, in terms of what's left, should be in the sixties, so it's, it's dramatic. And uh, our total expenditures on the last page is highlighted because I wanted to give you that explanation.
Yeah.
That I gave you earlier, that even though it's forty percent, two-thirds of our, our Swanscott bill is out or paid out already and so we paid uh, one point one million out of a one point six million bill, so obviously that's gonna reflect there. So we are tight. Uh, I'm optimistic. Uh, we do have funds from revolving accounts, for example. Um, since I have been here, e- our preschool account has never been taxed for utilities or other services that we give them, so they're supposed to be a self-sustaining or- organization. Uh, because it's paid for by parent tuition checks. I have always carried them because we could in the budget. This year, we're gonna bill them for their utilities, their phone, their heat, their electricity. And so that'll come balance those numbers. Okay?
Thank you. Budget time.
Any questions? I have no other.
Great. Onto budgets.
Okay. Um, item seven A is a very similar looking document that the, that we just um reviewed. What I would like to do is once again, start at the bottom right. Uh, from my first department request, which if you remember was over eleven percent increase. Um, I have it down to a four point eight three six percent increase or two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. I have done that, you know, if you compare the last, the, the right-hand column to the other columns to its left. Uh, you can see how I did that. I mean, it's not rocket science, I pared things down, uh, I fine-tuned the numbers. Uh, in this out-of-district sped numbers, I um, budgeted the circuit breaker, which I don't usually do. So I reduced that number by fifty, fifty thousand dollars because I know we're gonna get fifty thousand dollars plus in circuit breaker. Uh, because that's what we got this year when we spent less money for out-of-district tuitions. Um. What I do want you to know is I, I have a meeting with the town manager, uh, the town administrator, excuse me, and the finance director uh, at one o'clock on Thursday and I'm gonna be presenting this to them. I've been keeping them informed of every rendition of my budget, they have seen, uh, the finance director has seen this already. And uh, I'm hopeful that this is going to be an acceptable budget to them that they can support with us at the FinCom. I think it is and I'll explain why. Of the two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollar increase. Uh, I'm looking for my number.
I know.
Fifteen thousand, eight hundred dollars is for an increase in sped tuition and of course, that's a net because I'm already, I'm already budgeting the fifty thousand uh, circuit breaker. Sixty-two thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars is an increase in Essex tuition, which I can't control. Uh, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars is the Swanscott increase, which is a twofold increase. It's an increase in the, uh, the two and a half percent for the base tuition every year plus the increase of twenty thousand, one hundred dollars for the sixth grade, which we will pay every year, under the contract. And then uh, sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars is an M-two salary for our sixth grade teacher, which I have that. They add up to basically two hundred and five thousand dollars, which is four point five percent of the four point eight percent increase. So basically, those four numbers, which are uncontrollable. Are all of the increase, so we basically have a, a flat line budget in every other line. Now, it's not really every other line because some lines go up and some lines went down. But all the other line others add up to a point three percent increase. I think that's highly justifiable.
Tony, how come, uh, you probably said this, I'm gonna apologize and advance this question. But the tuition for private schools over the, over the versions of this budget has gone down a hundred thousand dollars. And I wondered what that, why that was, should I know that?
Um. I have been bringing special education, private tuitions back to alternatives.
Alright.
Marblehead and Swanscott, which are dramatically less expensive.
Okay, okay.
The number had also been dropping.
Good.
The number of students in out-of-district because I think we're doing a better job with our tier three support.
I would, okay, great.
Uh, but that as you know, we have a, one student who um very necessary, I mean, it's all based on the IEP meeting, I mean, I don't have anything to say about what's necessary or not. But um, that one student's tuition for this fiscal year will be in the neighborhood of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, including last year, because it began in March, it's three hundred and fifteen thousand for fifteen months. So, that's the, that's everything, that's the whole difference. Uh, and we did have another student who we, uh, is in an out-of-district, who was at uh, charter school. And the diff- the difference between the charter school and, and the out-of-district is pretty dramatic. But we would have covered that with, with the budget.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, we, we had a really good run. And I remember, I think the chair remembers, I've been saying that to the FinCom uh, every year. I said, we're, we were having a good run, can't last forever.
Yeah.
And it did.
So my question, Tony, to you is, are there any categories that you feel are too lean?
Uh.
Cause now's the time to.
Yeah.
Excuse me, what? What did you say, Patty?
I asked if, if there are any areas that might be too lean, because now.
Lean, okay.
Now's the time to ask.
That's a really good question, Madam Chair. Um. Because we are in a healthy fiscal position with our revolving accounts that can be spent in a variety of ways. For example, uh, the revolving account for early childhood tuition can be spent for um utilities and other building expenses, custodial costs, which I've never done. And um, you know, there's two sections this year, so, you know, if you do the math, you know, it's kind of two eights or two nines, so. Um. If you deal with by the pupil, you know, it's, we have thirty-eight students in the preschool, so you know there's a significant amount of, of money that can be s- transferred this, this year and next year. We're not gonna use it all. Um. The donation account, I have avoided spending money on the donation account since I got here. Because um, I think I spent some the first year, cause I kind of didn't know how things were gonna go. And that was a tight year, but ever since then, um, you know, we've had breakage. People retiring, people leaving experience, ninety thousand, eighty thousand dollar T-shirts, replacing them with the y- younger, less experienced teachers and we've been using that breakage. Um, so that account is very healthy. Um. So I'm comfortable. I'm not as comfortable as I would be with more money in a couple of accounts. So for example, this is the first year I have budgeted the preschool paying for electric phone, custodial services and heat. So in the fiscal twenty-five budget, if you notice, I actually dropped those numbers cause I'm budgeting the early childhood next year, paying for a portion of that.
And that makes sense.
So um, so yes, I'm optimistic and comfortable. Uh, I, I would really fight going any lower if I come back from that meeting on Thursday. Um. And the town administrator says, you know, you gotta get it down to three percent. Uh, I don't really know how I would deal with that, but you know. We'll deal with it. I don't think that's going to be the, the response, they, like I said, when I can show um between Swanscott to sixth grade teacher and Essex, that's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars right there. Of, you know, that alone is four point one percent, those three things.
No, understood, I'm just wondering if there are any categories where we should go a little higher.
I, I don't think so, I think we're in good shape.
And then in regards to the other accounts, is, we have one more iteration of the budget or is this the final foregoing?
I would like this, well, the next meeting, we have our budget hearing at six thirty on February thir- thirteen. I typically don't like to change it from this meeting to the budget hearing because uh, if, if you remember, I produce a uh.
Presentation.
A PowerPoint presentation, my uh, commonly known as Tony's Dog and Pony Show. Uh, and that requires, you know.
Full of points, yeah.
Yeah. And then the Dog and Pony Show would be worthless without numbers on it. So if we change things, and this of course is the same one I'd like, you know, just change the cover sheet I'd like to bring to the um, finance committee. So uh, this is the one, but based on the, the meeting we have, I have Thursday. This may be, you know, it's, this year is unusual in many ways, this may be the unusual year where I have to uh, make some alterations. Obviously, I would keep the school committee fully informed of the results of that meeting electronically.
Did you say it's six thirty on the thirteen?
February.
Yeah, so we don't have a meeting on the sixth?
Yes, we do, at seven o'clock.
Oh. Oh, okay, that's true, so maybe on the sixth? Cause that would be the next one. No, it's the thirteen, the seventeenth, yeah.
Yeah, it's always the second meeting. And I'll produce all the documents.
And do you start at seven, you know, it's a special budget meeting?
The school committee, seven, the hearing, six thirty.
Good.
And remember, that gives us an hour because as long as you start your meeting by seven twenty-nine, you're within the guidelines for the open meeting call.
Right, so you wanna start at something? Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay?
Yeah.
Any questions?
So moving on to go to business. I have this line, I have fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget development fourth draft, we just want to do that, right? Alright, superintendent search update, I don't have much to report, um, we are rooting next Wednesday on the thirty-first, I had to move things around. Um, so I have more to report. Can I ask a question, of course, do we have a couple applicants, three? Okay, wasn't there anything to change? Okay, so three.
And Madam Chair, that meeting's here?
Yes.
In this room?
In this.
This very room?
In this very room on the thirty-first.
What time?
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Okay, I'll have the room set up, would you like a square?
Well, this is great, yeah.
Just like this?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
And if there's any paperwork you need done for that meeting, please feel free to give it to Chris or me or.
Oh, thank you.
Um, Patty, Patty, is that a meeting or initial interviews? I was having a hard time hearing.
No, it's, it's, uh, we're meeting as a committee and then.
Okay, that's what I thought you said, thanks.
Reviews on the sixth of February, pending the availability of the candidates. Um, but that's when we'd like to have them and then by that time, a recommendation to school committee regarding the applicant. So more to follow.
So Madam Chair, February sixth, is the school committee meeting with the candidates?
No, no.
No.
No, 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 the sixth would be when the search committee would be meeting with the candidates.
What happens on January thirty-first?
Thirty-first is when we get together to root who the applicant, so to follow up any interview questions.
So, so there's no applicants at the thirty-first, there's applicants at the sixth.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
How long on the meeting? For which, the thirty-first?
The thirty-first, yeah.
I do have. I can't see what.
And Madam Chair, is uh, MASC producing documents for you?
They always do, they're great, so I, I don't think I'll have to be making any copies of anything.
Okay.
Mine usually comes with a little Wohler card. Because it's very cool with the, with the documentation, so I'm like, okay.
Very good.
We're, we're on our way, ready? Long-range planning update, this is the one that we always have on our agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, I left that on the agenda because um, I was under the impression that following the last meeting, the school committee would be forwarding me a statement um, from the school committee to go out to the community, parents and guardians, staff about the future grade levels of the uh, school. Now, I did see something very recently.
Yes.
And I just left it on the agenda so that you would talk about.
Yep.
Uh, I, I still don't have a statement. The one thing I did wanna say is that statement looked like it was sent by me.
I know.
And it's that, and I wanted to make sure the school committee wanted that, I mean, I'm, I'm. And it's that, and I wanted to make sure the school committee wanted that, I mean, I'm I'm I'm, I functionate your direction.
I think I need some clarification on statements that, so I sent yesterday, yesterday, maybe not to everybody. It's very similar to what we out to the parents and guardians last year.
Yep.
Um, in regards to the, um.
Right.
What the next year would look like, and last year Tony was, I knew had signed it. Meaning that this fifth and sixth grader saying, is that what would be very clear on?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, basically the plan, you know, that it will be a pre K six grade next year.
Yeah.
And what that means.
And going forward first, you know, for what we can see right now, that's what we look like going.
Yes. So I'm I'm open for discussion in regards to if you think that it should be going out when this.
I think that should probably follow up, you said to dial, yeah.
Yeah, or should Tony sign off?
I have it, and do you want me to read it?
Yes, sure.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, the statement as it stands says the following. Dear parents and guardians of Johnson Elementary School students. The administration and staff will be planning for a pre K. Dash six school next year. The first and fourth grades will each have two sections slash classes. All the grades will each have one section slash class. Each section class will have a full time classroom teacher and support staff. We will continue to work on creating a curriculum that will foster emotional, social, and academic growth for all students. Teaching assignments will be communicated to the J E S community as soon as possible. We are committed to provide, to providing an exceptional vibrant and exciting learning environment for all students. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me warmly, Tony.
Valid.
Um, the only, the only suggestion that I had made was um. To just revise the wording to say, at this time, we are planning to have two sections slash classes for both kindergarten and fourth grade. Because it it just sounds really kind of middle, and I mean, things might change. I understand that we we won't um, know exactly, but just gives us some some wiggle room. Instead of saying they will have a full time class, I mean, um. The fir- first and fourth grades will ha- each have two sections, just to change the wording to this plan to have two, two, two sections. And then as you're reading it again, I I don't think every classroom has a support staff.
Yeah, that was the same thing I wanted to make clear, I wasn't sure of that either.
Yeah, um. I would recommend, since it's coming from me, a couple of things. One is to elaborate the uh, citation to include community members and staff. These are simple things, I mean, the the statement itself is fine. Uh, the first and fourth grade teachers uh, will have, you know, maybe, maybe those two sentences should be combined, you know. At this time, do you want to say at this time, or do you want to be more definitive? And uh. And again, the the support staff needs to be clarified, and support staff as needed.
Sure, yeah.
That's all.
Yeah.
And then there's a couple of grammar things, I hope I didn't spell curriculum the way. I bet I did though.
I did a lot of copying and pasting, so.
And then what I'll do is I'll work on this tomorrow, I'm coming in to work on policies tomorrow, I'll work on this, and I'll send it out to all of you.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any issues with it going out under you?
No. No.
I was just thinking about it, and I'm like, okay, well, that's the way our school has been operating, so why should it be coming this week maybe? That's great.
Fine with me. Like I said, I'm at your direction, I just, you know, I'm careful not to overstep my boundaries, but whatever you want.
Thanks.
I do. Okay. I've already sent that to me, uh, so that I'll know it's ready to be edited.
Perfect, now we're back to policies and quick bold adjustments.
Well, thank goodness, I was having a withdrawal syndrome because we haven't talked about a policy and so on.
So. Who wants to?
I'm happy, do you want to go back to like fire the box?
I I really was having.
Yeah, I I really missed out just being on the gym last time.
Do you want to fire a little?
Yeah, sounds good.
One second.
All right. Ready?
Yep.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve J I C H substance abuse uh, new seven D.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve harassment of students filed J I C K.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve student complaints and grievances filed J I I.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve student travel regulations filed J J H dash R.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to. To approve physical restraint of students filed J K A A.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve immunization of students filed J L C B.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve student records filed J R A.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve student photographs filed J R D.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve use of electronic messaging by school committee members. File B H E.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve district security relating to technology filed E H A A.
I'll second.
All in favor? And I'd like to make a motion to approve data and records retention filed E H B.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Of course.
I think on this policy, the word compile should be comply.
Yeah.
And does everyone agree with me? Uh, last sentence before the source?
Yes. Okay. Um, you want to make the motion again?
Sorry, um, is this, I was flipping it back for a day.
This is regulation.
Okay. E H B, yes, so comply, yes, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve data and records retention. With the update of showing under sort, under um, the last sentence, the district may comply with public records requirement filed E H B.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh.
I'd like to make a motion to approve personnel use of technology filed G B E E.
I'll second.
All in favor? And I'd like to make a motion to approve access to digital resources filed I J N D.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make the motion to approve use of technology and instruction filed I J N D V.
I'll second.
All in favor? And I'd like to make a motion to approve acceptable use of digital resources filed I J N D C.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve student use of technology in schools filed J I C J.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve community use of digital resources filed K D C.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Like to make a motion to approve district website and social media filed K D C B.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve universal free school meals filed E F C.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is it called universal, is that called free and reduced priced food services?
It says new universal free school meals.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, it's for you, uh, it's a good question, the bottom of MASC says this was a complete rewrite two thousand twenty three. My assumption is that it's up to date.
You and herself, okay, thanks.
It's, I think it's in response, Gina, to the fact that, um, that so many years of full pay, right? So there really isn't a free reduced lunch program right now.
Yeah.
Maybe again someday. Moving on to new business, the declaration of a surplus printer toner?
Thank you, Madam Chair, item A, you have a picture of toner that has been found by a variety of people, that we don't own the machines anymore. Just so you know, I have offered all of this to the departments of the town government. Uh, and I will be sending this picture to uh. The town administrator, because when I sent it out last week, he was away, so just to make sure. I have no idea if they have the machines, but obviously, if they do, they should have this toner. All this is in sealed boxes and, you know, the pack, you know, airtight packaging, so it does last a long time. So Madam Chair, with your permission, I would respectfully ask the members, a member of the school committee to make a motion. And uh, second, and for the school committee to vote to declare these items surplus.
I'll make a motion to declare these items containing mostly toner surplus.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the calendar, yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, first of all, I want to tell you that there's a major change in this calendar as of. Three sixteen P M today. So um. This calendar is basically a rewrite of of our historic calendar. Today, uh, by electronic means, a meeting was held by uh, with Mr. Andrews, uh. Ms. DeGuardia and certain staff members. Uh, to discuss kindergarten screening. Uh, they would like kindergarten screening to move from the first two days of school. To June fourth and fifth of this year.
I love that idea.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot more sense, honestly.
I mean, especially, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about it. Because obviously, how kids perform in June is different than how they'll perform in August, but. You know, I think identifying the kids that need extra support really is a great idea. And it doesn't chew up two days of school for the kindergarteners, I mean, they have one day of school before a long weekend. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I also think the benefit of that too is like, at the end of the year, they've had a year with their teachers, they can also. Say as to how the kids have been doing, I I, yeah, I think for the kids and for the families, it makes a lot more sense.
Good.
Yeah.
So let me give you the net result.
Right.
It won't be on your calendar.
Right, it'll be on this calendar, well.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
Right.
Mister. Mister Parentazzi, do we have to amend our current year's um, calendar to um. To to include it?
I looked at that, I don't think so, uh, follow my thinking. So on the current year calendar, it had the kindergarten screening at the beginning of this year, we already did it. And on this calendar. It. The, you know what, I'm wrong. Actually, I'll put this on, but it will be for the two thousand twenty five twenty six school year.
Right.
Right.
And then we could just update the website.
Yes, we'll just, well, we'll send a notice to all the parents and, I mean, you know, we'll do a lot of P R on what's happening this spring.
But we. Of course. Yeah.
Which, but on this calendar, it'll say. June fourth. And fifth kindergarten screening for. September two thousand twenty five.
Oh, for this one, yeah.
Two thousand twenty four.
Right?
Two thousand twenty four, so.
No.
For this one that's in our packet, we're talking about.
Because next year's calendar, the Ju- the June screening at the end of next year's calendar will be for.
The following year.
Sorry, I thought you were gonna put add June. June fourth and fifth twenty four to the beginning of this calendar, because. I I think that for parents who are incoming kindergarteners, if it's not on the this current year's calendar. Wouldn't they be looking at this calendar for when the screenings would be? And it wouldn't be at the end twenty five, it would be in twenty four. So it should go at the beginning.
Um, but it's. The calendar that we're going to be voting on is for the twenty four twenty five school year. And if the kindergarten screenings are happening in June of twenty four, it would be in our, the current school calendar year that we're already in. So that that's why I was asking if we should amend this current school year's calendar that we already voted on last year around this time. But it sounds like we're just going to update next year's calendar and send out a lot of. Uh, multiple notifications to the incoming kindergarten class.
Yeah, like with the newsletter and the website calendar and, right? Those things would be updated for families to be able to see online, but then what you're saying, I think, is that we would also have the fans receive notice.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, and we could put an amendment to this year's calendar. That says, the, you know, that has the dates on it.
Yeah.
I think we should, if it's gonna stay at the end of the year. Then I think we should.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so this twenty twenty four twenty five calendar would read first day for students, grades K through six. On the twenty seventh, and it would still be can, preschool orientation. And then that whole block about kindergarten screening would be removed. And then the twenty eighth would be preschool first day, and the whole block of kindergarten first day would be removed.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. I honestly also think it makes the beginning of the school year so much less confusing, cause like, everybody is starting on different days.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's no question that it's less confusing, there's no question, it's it's also better for our staff, because our staff is trying to schedule their, their support. And they're doing screenings.
Right.
For two days, so that means that the support doesn't start for another two or three or four days after that. I'm worried. It's, I think it's a good pilot to do, I'm worried with that, the screening done in the beginning of June. Which then this, the education doesn't start for three months and a week. If you think about that in the life of a five year old.
Are you worried about learning logs?
No, I'm I'm worried that whatever testing's done in June may not.
Apply.
Apply anymore, because if you think about a five year old, how, what the percentage of their life three months is.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think that's been the argument against doing it all this while, is that how they'll perform in June? You know, they're gonna learn so much more developmentally that they might not need the extra support come September, but.
I, see, I look at it as the opposite, like, if. Just putting myself in like a parent's shoes that has a little one, like, if I felt like. My child was evaluated at the end of the year, you hope that they will continue to make progress or catch up if they can by September, but. If then they have the evaluation and they may need extra support this summer, in my opinion, would be a great time to at least work on that before the school year starts. I don't know.
I agree.
That's how I see it, I agree, I agree with that, you know, given the.
Rather than, you know, sooner the better, I I think, you know.
So what you're suggesting is. We do a summer school for kindergarten students who need it.
I mean.
It's impossible.
It's possible, like, that would break it all.
I was thinking like, that would be a really great opportunity, I think, for some of these. Families to get a better sense, especially where the teachers have known them all year, to then say, okay, if they need some extra support, maybe they. Maybe they're able to do it that summer year.
So it'd be for the current pre K or going into.
Going into kindergarten.
A little bit.
Yeah, whether we can pay for it or not is a different issue.
Yeah.
But uh
I just come up with the idea.
I may have some
And it wouldn't have to be the whole time, like it it could be a shortened amount of time, you know, but just a little.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there are, we'll have some S or three funds still.
Yep.
You know, that has to be spent.
By September, yeah.
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 Yeah, so that that's a, that's a really good suggestion. Okay. So I will take your direction to amend the current year's calendar to put the June of four, five, two thousand twenty-four dates for kindergarten screening, and then, of course, we also send out individual notices, et cetera, et cetera. And then I will amend the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar to reflect the beginning of school for kindergarten students to be the same day as for grades one through six. And for the preschool, excuse me, for kindergarten screening to be done for the following year in June.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. We'll we'll do that by consensus.
Okay.
Yeah.
So moving on to
Musical instruments for us.
Physical instruments, Patty.
So uh only in your hard packet, and I apologize to the two members of the committee at home, because I didn't get this one until three thirty-seven P M. today. The uh items um that have been donated by the chair are one hand painted, uh one large hand painted drum by Hoka, one set of bongos by Synergy, one Shure microphone, mile five forty-five, one assorted basket of percussion instruments for the young grades by Nino, one Fender ukulele and one Makala ukulele. And um Madam Chair, I respectfully ask the school committee to accept those instruments that uh have been valued at six hundred and thirty-four dollars.
We, the school committee would like the chair to play the bongos. I would like to, my thoughts make a motion.
Yeah.
I would love to make a motion to approve the said instruments estimated at a six hundred and thirty-four dollar value donated. Um, we would like to make a motion to approve these instruments. I second the motion with Madam Chair. Aye.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, thank you.
I'll play the bongos.
So generous.
Yep, excellent.
Next Monday night, make him.
Okay.
Moving on to fees.
Fees. So um in your hardcover packet, there's an updated version of late uh labeled eight D. I apologize once again to the two members of the committee who are home. This was given to me. The good news on this one is, the only difference is the starting time is seven fifty instead of seven fifty-five.
Wonderful.
Everything else is the same.
Great.
Uh, for some reason, um we've in previous years, for some reason that I really can't even remember, we felt that it was better to start this or end this at uh that time.
Maybe like staggering drop-off or parking or out of
I don't know. Anyway, it's at seven fifty now, which is uh the appropriate time, and I am recommending no increase in the fee.
So do I have to make a motion to
Yes.
Okay, could I please, I'd like to make a motion to approve A B in a home public school preschool tuition rates, noting a change at seven fifty A M. for starting. Second, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Madam Chair, we also have the morning program. And um the morning program is called our drop-off program or our before-school program to separate it from the preschool program. This is seven A M. to seven fifty A M. It includes breakfast consisting of fruit, dairy and a grain. And um what I did to make it the paperwork simple is I just made a copy of the online registration form, so you can see.
Right.
And I recommend no change in this uh fee either.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything without doing it, right?
Uh, yeah, it's a fee, you have to
Oh, oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve A D morning program registration. A second motion, all in favor?
Okay.
Moving on to the first reading of the new policies. It's all you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item A C is non-discrimination. This is the current one is a two-pager. The new one is a two-pager, but it's completely been rewritten in Au- in August of two thousand twenty-two by the M A S C attorneys. And it is much more um legalistic. Um, it defines the commitment of the community uh by creating or by stating six statements about how the community and the school committee is going to encourage um non-discrimination. And it requires all members of the school committee to conduct themselves in accordance with this policy. Obviously, it's an improvement. The other one was kind of what do you want to say? Kind of
Okay.
Yeah. The other one basically was not enforceable. If you really think about it that way, if somebody, you know, you could wanted to say somebody was discriminating and you say, let me see your policy, it was kind of weak, this one really toughens it up. And then, uh stop me anytime, please. A C A is non-discrimination of basis of sex. Once again, uh this is very similar with uh to the one we had, because the one we had was updated recently. And this simply uh updates the references and gives a uh notice of interpretation uh link, which the other one did not do.
There's the windows in the hall.
Oh. Uh, A D, educational philosophy is our current A D. The new A D would be a uh school committee and district mission statement. Uh, much more modern. Uh, the advice of M A S C is if you have your own mission statement, to substitute it. But I think this one is uh not only sufficient, I think it's very good. However, in the interim between this meeting and February thirteenth, a member of the school committee would like to take on writing a mission statement that's uh more clever or more all-encompassing. I I think the school committee would give that and I certainly would give it every consideration, but once again, I when those attorneys write something, I tend to stay out of it. Uh, the current policy is smoking on school premises, A D C. The new policy is entitled tobacco products on school premises prohibited. Because as you know, uh in the modern era, there are multiple ways of utilizing tobacco products, not just smoking it. So this one is very inclusive.
Great. I like that plus we started.
B B, policy B B. There was a typo in our policy before, which I missed. I guess everyone's missed it for a thousand years. It actually said, uh, and I circled it, that you have seven members of your committee. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure when there were ever seven. This policy, interestingly enough, is is shorter. Uh, but it refers to mass general law. And uh I don't have much to say about that other than I do know that there's been five and seven. I just wanted to make sure you you were aware of that. The next policy is B G C. And uh it's very similar, it's a little shorter. And it was updated in two thousand twenty-two by the M A S C attorneys. Next one is B I B A. It's in your current manual as written. So um it's up to you. One of the cross-references is different, but everything else uh has been updated. So I leave it up to the committee if you want to redo this one or not. With school committee conferences, conventions and workshops.
I would think. Yeah.
Redo it? No?
I I think it's fine with this.
Okay. Very good. Next policy is B I D, school committee member compensation and expenses. Once again, rewritten a little bit, uh it's been shortened. Uh, and it refers to mass general law, just like the other one. Uh, it seems that it took out a lot of details. It don't seem, the attorneys don't think it's required. A lot of votes and charters and plan Bs and E's. So I think it's good, good new one. C A is re- roles and responsible ability of the superintendent. The new uh updated version is called administration goals. And rather than votes, it's in narrative form.
I want to point out that neither policy has the superintendent getting up on top of the roof.
Get out of it.
Well, I'd like to point out that it doesn't prohibit such.
There, not two days.
I don't know how willing this next one is, they
it needs to be an other, other duties aside.
Exactly. Other duties.
Okay, uh school superintendent, file C B is new, it's not in our current policy. And it simply says that you're gonna hire one and fix their compensation.
Fix it or set it.
Yeah, I would say set their compensation, fix their compensation.
And it fixes an old, an old verb for this type of thing, but it does sound strange in
It sounds very strange.
I think now
Have we added wording that's from M A S C? Is that a problem?
I have no idea. I'll check it out.
Seems a lot.
It could be a typo.
It is, it is weird wording. I agree with that.
We catch that.
Sounds like there's an issue with it that needs to fix.
They probably wrote like that back in the sixties and it just hasn't, they didn't, shouldn't be updating language.
Truly.
My superintendent's contract, okay, we can consolidate this all together.
Yeah, yeah, that that way there's a reason why they're not. There's an additional sentence in this one, in accordance with subcontract or in an absence of specific contract language, by the vote of the members of the committee, may choose to negotiate a successor contract with an incumbent superintendent. That's not in the old one for some reason. I don't know. I guess the old ones simply refer to what you do when you hire a superintendent rather than when you rehire or extend. That must be the interpretation. Okay. Uh, C B I is the evaluation of the superintendent. This one's slightly different.
My final last sentence, very
Yep.
Oh.
Okay. I did my research on this because I knew that would be interesting to you. Mass general law is clear and there is a superior, the uh state judicial supreme court has a decision about it. Because evidently some uh watchdog challenged a school district at some time. The individual evaluations that are submitted to someone, whether it be the chair, the clerk, or in your case, Chris, to summarize, are not subject to the open meeting law and are therefore not foilable. In other words, if somebody wanted to see what Tony Parentazi, a member of school committee X, said about the superintendent, they could not do so. The only document that is a public document is the one that we bring to this meeting, to your meeting. You vote on and goes in my file, or it goes into the superintendent's file. And I brought that here from Somerville because I knew, because it had been challenged in Somerville, I knew what the law said. Therefore, that sentence is important for what it doesn't say. It says that all s- school committee discussion and deliberation related to this performance shall be conducted in an open session. It doesn't say the input that is given by individual members are subject to open session. And I'm sorry if I was long-winded, but that that can get touchy. C C B is new and it's about staff relations, and I think it's a very good policy to have. Uh, C E, administrative councils, cabinets and committees. You probably want this because your hiring committee falls under this policy. Uh, you don't have subcommittees and you typically don't have um other committees, but right now you do have one.
True, you never know what's future.
Yeah, exactly. Approval of handbook and directives is C H C A. And it's been rewritten in narrative form and rather than numerical form. And uh generalized and updated in two thousand twenty-two. And I apologize, I mean, I was a little short with the policies. We only got the S uh this with the new policy.
Oh, my gosh, thank you so much for all of these policies. I know. It's so slam. It was painful.
And Madam Chair, I will follow the typical uh procedure. I will uh write on policies approved, the uh second reading and approval today's date. And on these, I will put them in for second reading at the next meeting and put a new batch in for first reading.
So is there any other committee business that we want to discuss?
None for me.
Does anyone have any announcements?
No.
I have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight forty-nine P M.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Feel better, Michelle?
Feel better, Michelle?
Feel better.
Feel better, Michelle.
Christina, bye.
Um, all right, I just have one question about uh the um fees part for the preschool, the amended time was to seven fifty AM from seven fifty five, right? I just want to make sure I have it right in the minutes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank, have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, eight seven fifty. Getting better. He's out.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's cold.
Well.
That was, that was my thing except at nine P M.
I know.
When I've been here for forty hours.
And I'm so ready to be started today.
Good night.
Oh, yeah, kill that.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.